On the fly, trading to stream the other way, but because we're sharing. You custom should pull the one that was set into the Zoom meeting.
That's just it now, I think. It's it's a little delayed, I think, as we're talking, right?
None of the mics are even on yet.
Oh, that's weird.
So sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, your speakers, this is this mic. That's good, this Mexico camera already.
Well, I got. Well, I got.
Yeah, he's good there. He's good there, start video and bring that camera. And then that one, you want to switch to the. And then that one, you want to switch to the. This isn't.
That's just an adapter. That's just an adapter. Once that comes up, you'll be able to switch to. Once that comes up, you'll be able to switch to. Once that comes up, you'll be able to switch to.
Okay. 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 Okay.
Taking another job, not in education.
Okay.
We have someone on the agenda approving this.
Okay. I don't know if there was anything.
He's the.
It. No, doesn't mean the batteries are dying.
Okay.
So.
Before we play more singing yet.
Thank you. Her name is what?
Thank you.
My name is Joe Baran.
I like the earrings, one of these for you.
Yeah, my Colin Cross.
Call to order, meaning of the South London Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December fifth, twenty twenty two. By posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Lamontville. Borough of Stockton and the township of West Danwell. And advertised on December the eighth, twenty twenty two, and the Hunter County Democrat and the Trenton Times newspaper. I see the.
What do I need to say?
That's.
Andrew, would you call the role, please?
Gina Persetti.
Yeah.
Brian Feed.
Here.
Kevin Kowalski. Sean Lewis. Chris Petrucci. Diane Purcell.
Yeah.
Megan Warner. Ryan Toppin, you know.
Yeah.
And Galen.
Here. So this evening, we do have some board members are going to be coming shortly. But we do have one who will not be coming tonight. We received the notice last week that Sean Lewis. Who was a representative from Lamontville is resigning his board seat. So we regretfully accept his resignation. And we will be looking for a. A candidate from Lambertville to apply for that unexpired seat. And they'll be able to serve that for a year until the next election. I do need a motion from the board to accept Sean's resignation. Ronnie, thank you. I need a second for that.
Second.
A second by Diana, thank you. Any discussion? I would only say how much I appreciate the time. It's the time commitment to be on the school board and Sean. Did a great job in the time that he was here, so it is a voice vote, I believe, for this. So all in favor?
I.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
And I would just like to echo Gina's comments. Thanks, Sean, obviously, for the big commitment. We appreciate. Especially our school community gave some really valuable input as part of our communication plan. Which we put into place. So again, I really appreciate you did site. And thank you for serving for the board. And I do have, you'll just see on the projector, and I'm going to be sending this out tomorrow to all of our community, but. Just kind of just gives the overview of the qualifications. For a board member, we will keep the seat, you know, obviously open into our next board meeting, which will hold interviews in public. For anyone who's interested, and we are asking that if anyone is interested, that they submit. An application, a letter of interest with a resume to Mr. Harris or business administrator by November seventeen. So I just wanted to put that out there, but it will be out for the community tomorrow.
Now to the good stuff, for Lego robotics, well, Dr. Kay.
This is what I know when their presentation. Yep. So the kids, it's a relief, the whole program is very, it pays. So it's a little bit of a challenge. For adult-like behavior, because you want to come in and get so much direction about the way things should look. But it's really not about that, it's about them finding their own answer, the solution to really working from a total process. Fully presenting, moving, you can work out this thing without a goal. So this is a great practice, but then that's how we go to November, we're competing each other locally of the region. And it's. Happily ready to do this kind of thing completely with me sitting on the side. In fact, only to adults a lot in the room, but that so, and for all. I know be able to manage so forth. So it's it's an interesting topic. And I'm very proud of this team, but they've been working very hard. We had the traditional. After COVID, where typically in the summer, we have a great forum, we need kids where they get the key weapons and kind of. Experience robotics, it's where they come in for programs and fall, which is more focused on actually getting tasks. Task achieved, it will know about that. So we took a little bit with COVID. But things are slow, it's starting to come back. As you can see, a lot of kids are involved in the program. There are many, many more who signed up this summer. Unfortunately, I think people kind of forgot about our other commitments, because I expected more kids and then they didn't show up. So initially in August, there were thirty kids signed up, and my thinking going out that time. So we kind of went through a process of lottery, select these kids. And even other ones, but they just never showed up. And so it was a little bit of an interesting learning curve for me as well, but I hope the challenge and. You know, somehow face this down next year, make sure that whoever signs up feels a common deal and deep. But that's it for me. The kids can kind of go with the rest of the presentation.
Robo circuits.
You can stand a little.
Our team name was created in ten, in twenty thirteen, ten years ago. Robo standing for robot and circuits because. Circuits are the majority of a robot. Our team number is ten, four, seven, three. Lego first masterpiece challenge. Our challenge is to. Just to complete the masterpiece challenge, which is get the robot that is over there. To complete all the challenges on the board. I'm going to play the video now.
Well, one second, Joey. The project is twofold. So with the. Part of the Lego robotics involves kids doing this robot game, and then another part involves creating a project that is rotating yearly. This year's challenge revolves around masterpiece art-related beats. But Joey.
I'm going to play the video now.
Want me to play it to everyone? Yeah.
Yeah, yes, please. With others can be an express, an expression of our creative selves. People who work in the arts. Can teach us a lot about how to communicate and to. With others can be an express, an expression of our creative selves. People who work in the arts. Can teach us a lot about how to communicate and to engage and how to entertain an audience, audience in any size. What can you learn from museums, theaters and films that help you share what you love to do?
Hold on.
You want to jump in and talk about this?
Oh, yeah, I guess. So our idea is like. Basically, a table where the sides of, it's going to be like rolled in. And the sides all have like projectors on them. So that they can't overlap and create like a three D like model that it might also be good for learning. Like you could have like something like a, like the. Like a war or something, and the kids could see that. So how the, how the machine works is the projectors on the sides are like create like. A picture. So then it's easier for people to teach instead of just like watching a YouTube video, it'll be like three D. And then it also uses like, we're thinking like, let it maybe use AI. To where, say, Mr. Kowalski can search up like. Um, any event in time or like some of that, and it would find like a lesson on that, and it would play that on the table.
So basically, VR, not the VR, some kind of hologram, three D, just sort of looking at three D projections and reflections and glass and so forth. They're much more portable than like, say, Freddie Mercury on stage, you know, we're not talking that, but smaller. They AI-based AI right now, we looked into it. AI is not able to project things yet, but in the future, so they should be able to project. Beginning of the curve, having some kind of projection systems to the teachers. The VR without the VR, topography maps or battlefields where there's a little bit of zooming in on situation. Or Medusa, we brought the light for language charts, things like that. Kind of cool idea I thought. Hopefully, we just make things a little bit more to gain kids, I guess, we need more of that. Are you guys?
Um, I just want to say that on the right, these were some of our original ideas for things we could do.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of. Brown area, yeah. And then the game is what's that?
All those can be an express, an expression.
One again.
Yeah, that's right. If you just go to the next slide, I think, there you go.
All right.
And the game.
All right. So I think you guys, that's the game.
So do you want to?
Talk about, no, guys, you guys have to talk about the map. Like that. Talk about what you're like, what's going on with the map? So we, no, you don't have to be too close, like that far. So we have bonus points and we're trying to make the robots that you see over there. So over here. So we're trying to get the robots to go from. Here and try to hit, hit all the bonus points. Do you want to explain what the bonus points are? Could I? Um, so the bonus, the bonus points are system, where if you get one thing, one task correct, as if. Uh, so if you have the robot and it comes over here, pushing this. Down as the dragon open up, that would count, that would give points. And the more tasks you do, the more points you get, ranging from. As I said, opening that dragon's mouth to making a whole entire robot lift up. Uh, to make the ride work.
There's multiple things. Pieces around, the more you need to meet. We have two and a half minutes to meet as many as possible. The three of us, holding and both, the robot goes all about the load possible, just move around and forth. And I think that we're going to show some of the mission we would be able to meet. Again, it's been, it's that, and we're finally meeting some of the missions in the operation within that next month. So we're right on track where we want to be, and we're, here's one. So how many points about we could get here? How many?
I'm assuming twenty.
Forty.
So forty points total.
Okay. Good luck, let's see, that's right.
Are you guys finished?
No, they're gonna run it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
The robot is moving with some codes they used on their Chromebooks. Yes. Alrighty.
And so some of you there came in, you saw what we typically interact like, but the last slide, the next slide is going to be on, we're just showing their typical workday. And what the kids look like in the classroom working on this.
I, I, but they go, I'm gonna rip the last piece.
All right, so then, this will be this piece. Alright, so then, this will be this piece.
What's this idea? Is this the helmet idea?
Alright, so like it's the helmet and this would have like attachments so that it can flip up. And you drink like Coke would go here and a straw goes into your mouth so you can drink it. And your food would go in these sockets and they're and they're small and big. So uh that's uh that's one of our ideas.
Just getting it up.
Some of the foundations for the building and what we've eventually gotten down, the further project. And don't worry. And then so what we accomplished in the last slide and I think hopefully it's evident. And I think, I think the kids start pronouncing some of these bigger words here, but we really worked very hard.
What have we accomplished?
What we have accomplished.
Out of the box thinking, robot designing, programming, collaboration, problem solving through trial and error. Multi discipline approaches, research building skills. We compete in events to to test our skills.
And for the multi discipline approach, um we just put the definition of one of the words. Cause it was kind of hard for us to pronounce.
Bye bye. Bye bye.
Too much. But the idea, the idea was it would start here, it would turn around. Uh going to the back, going to the back of the mechanism. And pushing it that way, the dragon's mouth opens. Uh so basically, the idea is to use the robot to use. The uh Lego things we've made.
To activate the Lego.
Great job, guys.
Thank you for listening.
So as we, as they wrap up, I just wanted to mention um. Kind in the spirit of, we kind, we started this last year, I think we wanna continue in this year. Our plan is that each one of our board education meetings will have some of our students on display in some capacity. So uh we talked to our principals organizing that. So this was the first one and that will continue the rest of the year at all levels, elementary, middle school and high school. So again, thank you for telling me, I appreciate it. Alright, so the next piece, important piece as well, is I have the privilege of introducing our student representative this year. Uh and then I'm gonna allow her to provide uh her first report for the Board of Education. Our newly elected student representative to the Southburn Board of Education for twenty three twenty four is Stella Reed. Stella is a current senior at South Hundred and participates in marching band, concert band and pit band for our musical. She is a leader on campus and in the classroom. This year Stella is currently enrolled in four AP classes. Stella plans on attending a four year university and is applying to Skidmore College, Bucknell University, Syracuse. Vassar, Smith and UMass Amherst. She will major in history and French and minor in computer science. Afterwards, she plans on getting her masters in library science. In her free time, Stella is an avid reader, likes being with her friends and volunteers at a local wildlife shelter. She has also been working at the Lambertville Library for the past two years. So we are excited to welcome Stella tonight to our school board. Welcome Stella.
Thank you. Okay, so. Um, what is new with South Hundred? South Hundred won the Battle of the Bridges game against New Hope-Soulbury High School fourteen oh, following a lively pep rally earlier that day. The South Hundred and Marching Eagles have had two competitions in the past two weeks, coming in fifth in both, in both. And winning the Cor de Sprey Award at the Jackson Liberty High School Tournament of Bands. The drama class is hosting a haunted house in the coming days to celebrate Halloween. And the twenty twenty four musical has been announced as the Drowsy Chaperone. The first varsity high school state soccer game of the season is this coming Wednesday, the twenty fifth. Student council decisions came out earlier this month with presidents and vice presidents being elected in all grades of high school. Students are beginning to vote for educator of the year and the senior Disney trip has been confirmed is happening and the first deposits have been made by students.
Thank you so much, Stella. Any questions for Stella from the board? One thing I will mention that she mentioned in her report is we had actually, and this is something we had not had, at least since I've been here. But we had a pep rally on Friday. We re-interviewed the pep rally. So um it was exciting to, you know, focus on our fall athletic programs and our band. And we had some performances and some fun games and all the kids were down in our uh gymnasium for the afternoon. So that will be the first of hopefully many more, one for winter and spring season as well, but uh it was a great day for our student body, so. Stella, thank you so much for your report. Appreciate it and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, um and Stella, if you have to go, if you need to, what we say is why you want to go. Next up, uh we'll have our updates from uh the PTO, PTA and L A E F. So I'll start with really, if anyone is here.
Uh we did have a lot of people that um did donate lots of prizes as well as sponsored holes. Um and then this year, we also had our first annual family golf outing. Um next year, we're gonna do it on a Saturday to get more of a turnout from the football team. Um we did just um. Uh with a grant um from the elementary school that's actually at St. John's, we approved their Gaga pit. And um. The fourth grade, uh we sponsored the colonial basket making workshop, so they'll be attending that this Friday. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi guys, um so Steph, Steph couldn't make it tonight, so she asked me to read for Lambertville, so I'll start with that. Um the PTA sponsored an apple giveaway from Soulberry Orchard on Friday after school. The PTA is hosting a no tricks, just treat snack cart for the teachers and staff of LPS. The week of ten thirty, um thanks to everyone who donated to that. The after school enrichment program is underway with roughly fifty students participating in various classes such as the circus club. And comic book clubs. The sixth grade sponsored the Halloween dance on Friday, which was a lot of fun, thanks to everyone who came out. They also sold cider and donuts from Soulberry Orchard on Sunday during the Lambertville House Tour. They raised almost twelve hundred dollars this weekend. They are now working on a give backs program with local businesses for the holiday season. Alright, and now for um Wes. So um good evening, everyone. We have been busy so far this year. We have two kids night out events under our belts and looking forward to our third Friday, September seventeen. From six thirty to nine PM in the multipurpose room. So far this year, our movie nights and kids night out events have earned us a little over thirty two hundred dollars. We had a lot of inquiries from um LPS parents about our last kids night out event. To answer, the most common question is, um yes, it is open to LPS families. The event is capped at sixty kids for safety. So we try to give priority to West Amherst families first and then it's open to anyone after that. Um our last kids night out event had about fifty eight kids in attendance, which is insane for two and a half hours. Um and we're really grateful for the help that we get from Miss Ryan. Um she runs all of our games and she keeps them really under control, which is really lovely. Um our trunk retreat is this Friday, October twenty seventh, from six thirty to eight PM. Right now, we have about twenty three trunks. Um I'll take trunks up until Wednesday. After that, I work on the map and everything's mapped out. Walkers are welcome to sign up on membership toolkit or pay at the door. Um the first week or the fifteen minutes before the event starts, we're gonna be having a sensory friendly period this year. Um there'll be no loud music, no flashing lights or anything too spooky. We are also having an eyes of the wild presentation in the multipurpose room every fifteen minutes from six thirty to seven thirty. The first presentation will be sensory friendly, so there will be, well, I mean, we can't control the animals' loud noises, but. There will be no loudness. Um we're gonna limit the amount of kids that we let in the room to keep it um nice and sensory friendly. Um we're also doing uh wooden pumpkin decorating contests. You can sign up for your pumpkin on membership toolkit and it will be delivered to school. Pumpkins are ten dollars and we're graciously donated by Neeslumber. Our holiday shop for the twenty three twenty four school year has been scheduled for December fourth through eighth. Details and volunteer opportunities will be coming out next month. The PTO has scheduled a parents' paint and sip night at Paint Party Farm. Mark your calendars for Thursday, December seventh, from six thirty to eight PM. The form to sign up will go out. Um the first week of November after we've recovered from trunk retreat. Um our sixth graders are killing it with fundraising. They have raised over nine thousand dollars so far. And that's pretty impressive considering it's October, so great job. Um their latest fundraiser for Madalena's cheesecake is just wrapping up. And if you haven't supported um the sixth graders at LPS or West Amherst, you can still do so on membership toolkit. There's a link for both. Um and the next opportunity to support um the sixth graders at West Amherst is their drop off. Ninja night at Next Level Ninja in Flemington. It's Friday, November third, from six to eight PM. The form to sign up for that is also on membership toolkit. Our next PTO member meeting is Wednesday, November fifteenth at seven thirty in the library at West Amherst. We'd love to see some new faces and some new volunteers, so thank you for your time.
Okay, uh next up, correspondence. Uh our court of the men letters we received, there's posted on the website, we did receive, but at least one letter this month. Next up. We have the approval of minutes. Uh the invitation to approve the minutes of the September eighteen meeting. Robbie, thank you very much. Uh can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Brian, thank you very much. Any discussion on the minutes of the September the eighteen year? If not, let's vote all in favor. Anyone opposed? Um and so next up, we will have uh two reports. First, our new uh uh director of personal, um Lena, is going to go over uh the results of some fake the testing.
Thank you, thank you.
If anyone, we have obviously slide presentation, I'll be sending it out. But if anyone wants to follow along, there's cottons right over there on the seat, uh in case you have a slide, I might just come up to see.
A little tricky. Um so I wanna start off by saying that I think what we saw here at the Lego. Um presentation is truly, if we could measure that achievement in test scores or numbers, we would be off the charts. Um all of the things that they listed on the last slide that they achieved and that the students knew that they had achieved. Was really just those are the remarkable skills that we wanna foster in all of our South Hundred and children. And having them work together to collaborate, to problem solve, to come up with ideas. That's all of that innovative and creative thinking that not only transfers into all of our jobs and lives. But really makes us the best people we can be. Uh they learned kindness, they learned to problem solve, they use their math, science, language, art skills. So what you'll see here is, you know, as far as we can, you know, I guess drill down on numbers. And put numbers to children and there is a lot of great things to celebrate. There's also a lot of things that we know we need to work on, um and we're all here committed to do that. But as I'm going through this and you have questions, we'll certainly take any questions. But also, please remember the smiles and the wonderful um accomplishments that that team just did. And as Mr. Kay said, they've been doing this for ten years. So thank you to the L A E F for providing them that opportunity. And these are things that can be translated right into our science and math classes. So it is not that it needs to be an after school enrichment activity. There are things that we can do. Um to help kids be successful and to grow. So let's get started though. These are the NJSLA. I will try my best not to use the um the lingo of educators. That's the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. You hear that a lot. And you also hear us talk a lot about the NJSLS, which are the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And those are the state standards. And um when Mr. Suso shares this link out, you'll be able to see. And you can click on anything in blue that's a link and that will take you directly to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Currently, New Jersey has just adopted new um English and language arts and math standards. But we have an entire year to implement them into our curriculum and then two years before the students are actually tested on them. They're not that much different, but I did wanna just bring your attention to that if you see that in the news. Um so you'll see that all students are assessed on the content taught at that particular grade level or course being assessed. And so what we wanna do is we want to choose testing dates. They're very strategic. Um towards the the very end of the assessment time period that the state offers us. So that's why ours are in early to mid May, because that gives our students and our teachers. More time than if per se we gave them in March. I know many school districts do do that in March. Um but I was glad to see when I came that South Hundred does choose the last dates possible. And that was also shared out at the beginning of the year. If you ever have any questions about when those dates are. Um go ahead and look at this posted. Please try not to schedule dentist appointments, haircuts or any type of um early dismissal. Those are great opportunities for your children to be in school. The science test is only given in grades fifth, eighth and eleventh. And you'll see that the content is only in fifth grade for grades three to five. And then in eighth grade, it would be six to eight and then eleventh grade is assessment nine to eleven. The New Jersey's um the scale, the scoring scale, oftentimes you'll see these numbers. Those of you that have children in the district that have taken tests, you will see that those are the ranges of the scaled score. And then we also oftentimes refer to them as performance levels, one, two, three and four and five. So this is where it gets a little fuzzy and I apologize. So if you all are following along or have the charts in front of you. These are English language arts um results and again, grades three through nine. And then the very last row is all grades. I have circled it in red or highlighted those numbers in red because that is where we are excelling. And I do wanna just bring that to your attention, because if you can see that number, I think it's fifty eight percent, I don't have my glasses on. Uh that is fifty nine? Fifty five. That is fifty five percent of our students in grade six are meeting those expectations. Which is an excellent number to celebrate. And then if we look to our fifth grade number, twelve percent are exceeding those expectations. So if you look down below, you can see that all's grades, if you look across, you can see those that weren't meeting. They're partially meeting, approaching and meeting and exceeding. This is where it also, um it is easier to refer to the paper in front of you. This is the grades across the district and our district achievement levels are on the top set of columns or set of bars. And the bottom set of bars is the state achievement. So. So when you're looking at those, you can see that there are numerous grades and bands where we are scoring above the state average, which is excellent. And then there are those areas that we also know that we need to target instruction to move those bars up. What we want to look for, oh, go ahead. I was just going to say what you'd like to look for is the light green and the dark green. And when you see those bars standing up, those are the ones that, of the students that have met the state learning standards. So those are also things that jump right out at us and we're very excited about. Our mathematics scores, again, I've highlighted some scores, the forty percent, the twenty-nine percent, and the thirty-eight percent. Those are where we actually want to target our instruction because those are the students that we can move hopefully, um, easily to the next level. And as you can see in sixth grade, again, another wonderful, um, set of scores with the twenty-nine percent and the thirty-six percent. If you add those together and then the eight percent, you'll see that a lot of, or the majority of the children are approaching, meeting, and exceeding those standards. Geometry scores are also very high and that's also to be celebrated. And that is because, um, of the children, oftentimes we look at our eighth grades and those are a little lower. And that's because there's many of the eighth graders are taking algebra one. Here's our mathematics scores, our district achievement levels and our state achievement levels. Those bars that are standing out to us in reds or orange are those bars that we need to look at and see what it is that we need to focus on in those grade levels. And that is the work that we're doing with our coaches and also looking at any type of transitions or new teachers and providing them the extra training. Science, um, science, we know that there's a lot of work to be done. I did want to celebrate the fifth grade and the twelve percent that have met advanced standards, or excuse me, the advanced achievement level. And again, you can see the scaled scores at the bottom. Um, again, we know we need to do a lot with our science. These are our science scores for fifth, eighth, eleventh, and all grades. And you can see, again, the district as compared to the state. The demographic analysis, this is what we are required to report out on, and these are our, what are, we call our subgroups. So when we drill down a little bit deeper into the students that are taking the test, um, here in South Hundredan and, um, as we identify different subgroups, we can also provide more targeted instruction for those identified. So this is the subgroup of race and this is our English Language Arts. What this shows us and what we can evaluate with our curriculum and our instruction is do we have culturally responsive teaching practices and pedagogy, or excuse me, I should say, and content or materials we're putting in front of, in front of all children? And do all children have access to that? And as we look to update all of our curricular programs, um, within the next year or so, we're looking at those programs that are culturally responsive and do identify and have multi, meet the needs of multi-children from multiple different groups. Here's our math. Again, this gives us the opportunity to know where we need to move work and those things that we can celebrate. This is science. We're looking at a new science program in, or we have adapted a new science program in K through six. So I just wanted to share that, um, before more questions start brewing in your mind. Um, but it does give us an opportunity, as I have said, to look at where our students' needs are and how we're meeting them. English Language Arts, we're looking at, this is the subgroup of gender. Um, and they actually aren't that different, which is interesting. Um, it's so great to see the number of girls in the Lego group and robotics and in the STEM fields as they continue on in middle and high school. Again, the math is very similar. The male and female numbers, um, are not that different. And the science. You'll see the advanced proficiency, proficiency, and minimal and limited proficiency. This is the program. So we report out on a subgroup program. F R is free and reduced lunch, section five oh four. Those are students that have been identified with a five oh four plan. E L L are multi-language learners, special ed, and then gifted. Gender, I thought that was gender, sorry. And our math. You can see the gender. You'll start to see where we really need to do some work. Again, we have small class sizes, so, um, that does play a difference or plays a part in, um, our scores. We could have one child or two cha-cha-children, um, not take the test and that because of our small population, that can affect scores, um, pretty dramatically. This is obviously an area what we need to work on. Um, and I have met with the E S L teachers um, to talk about how we can help support that subgroup, uh, in our science classes moving forward. So here is the comparison of the schools, um, Mr. Suso, you might want to just move the, um, the one bar. There we go. So along the bottom, you'll see again the, um, the scaled scores. And so this is looking at our three district schools, L P S, West Amwell, and the district um, numbers and then South Middle and South High School. As you're looking at the scores moving across the rows, you'll notice that our scores, I've highlighted in blue, those that are above the state average. Um, those are threes, that three next to it means that it is approaching the standard. Um, what I am looking forward to, uh, in years to come is having that number be fours and all of the scores obviously on this chart be blue and above meeting expectations. That's where we want our students to be. But again, you can see where the highlights are. And as soon as we've got this report, we started to have, um, conversations among teachers to say, you know, how can sixth grade teachers get together and talk to each other about the things that they were doing that may have resulted in these scores that may be higher at one school than another school? We looked at fifth grade, having, making sure that we have those conversations amongst our, um, teachers. And that's where the reconfiguration of the buildings will really be helpful because we'll be able to bring everybody in one building for all fifth grade and sixth grade. And that will be help with collaboration and student achievement. And as you can see, moving across and down, you know, with the math scores. Like this is our second year with a math program, Reveal Math. And so we're hoping that as teachers and students become more familiar with the vocabulary and the structure, that our scores will improve as they show success with, um, the program. This is probably one of the most, these, the, the next two slides are very, are the most important because it talks about the mobility. So this is probably what you're all looking at, all interested in, is these are, this is a cohort of students. So in the first bar, you'll see grades three to four. Those are third graders. And then how much they moved as fourth graders. So you can see those numbers. We want very little red and we want the most yellow and green because that means the students moved, grew, um, became academically more successful according to state's learning standards. So when you combine the yellow and green, you can see that that's a large percentage of children in all grades that moved, um, their scores went increased from year to year. And again, here's our math scores and you can see again all grades of math, when you combine those two percentages, that's almost all of our students or the majority of our students that grew from one year to the next. Here are our science scores. Um, I haven't had the chance to drill down into the content of the science. I do know since COVID, um, the science assessment has been, um, it is very challenging for all districts. And so this is not uncommon to see, um, science scores that are lower or not where we would like them to be. The test changed a lot, um, and programs, instruction, and how we're teaching um, now is going to be, you know, changing to meet the needs of this, to to show students are achieving our science scores. Dynamic learning maps are what some students taste. It's a portfolio-based assessment for students who require alternative assessments um, to the N J S L A. They're assessed in the following areas, the same, the English Language Arts, the math, and the science. It is administered online. It is required to be in person. It cannot be remote. Um, and the scored on four performance levels there, and they are a little different. This is for our students, um, who have individual education plans or I E Ps. And as you can see on the next slide, we had six students who took the tests and, um, in grades five through eleven. And a hundred percent of the students were either at target or advanced. So that's an excellent, and that's a great thing to celebrate. So the next steps, what are we going to do to, um, and how are we going to use this data from these assessments? This next slide is going to be a little fuzzy and I apologize so that if you have it in front of you. But what this does, it shows a continuum of how we use the data. Uh, this is a little different than if you were just going to take a test, look at it, and then provide an intervention or provide a different program. What we want to do is we want to continue that process. There are some, um, abbreviations, so I just want to point those out to you. M T S S is Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and it's a continuum. And after our specul- special education program review, this was one of the things that came out of it. What it does is it allows you to give assessments, as we do in the beginning of the year, that many of you are familiar with. And then based on those assessment scores, we provide specific instruction, whether it's in a small group, whether it's in a small classroom, it depends on what the students' needs are. And then the idea is that you provide a very targeted instruction group, set of activities, so that the child is just learning that set of activities or set of standards and then can, um, master that. And so what we want to do is along this continuum, the goal is to exit. And S W S, for those of you that don't know, is Standard with Support, which are our teachers that provide intervention or support services. Um, and so this is essentially a continuum that we want to continue to have students move through and make sure that we're meeting the needs, the progress monitoring. Um, and using that data, as I said, to specifically teach something, whether it is math facts or whether it is specific letters and sounds, or whether there's specific vocabulary words or spelling. Um, there are lots of different things that we assess on and then we design lessons specifically towards that standard. And our systematic and strategic plan for this year is to evaluate our English Language Arts programs. So we're looking at, um, lots of different things and the components that go into English and Language Arts. It's a very complicated, uh, content area. So we need to make sure that we're providing the foundation for our very early learners, our, the, the pre-emergent or those students just learning letters and sounds. But we need to also make sure that we're providing the support along the continuum of our students in our middle grades and our upper grades so that they are, can comprehend and they are exposed to both nonfiction and fiction. So that's a big shift, uh, in education and that we're going to be looking at in all of our programs. Um, it's a big thing with the state and the state standards. Students should actually be reading as much nonfiction as fiction, uh, which is very different than certainly when I was in school or when I first went into teaching where mainly we just read novels or we read fictional text. Um, so the great news is many, many publishers, uh, are on board with this. And so if you've ever seen some of the National Geographic books or some of the nonfiction texts that your children may have come home with, there's some great resources out there, um, to support this, this shift. We're also looking at, um, areas of growth for our K five math program. So this is our second year with Reveal Math. So we're experimenting with different structures within a math class. Uh, it's very, it's much more of like a workshop model in the sense that um, students are, can be working on different things at different times. The teacher still teaches a lesson or an objective or standard. But then the students may move to an independent activity. They may move to practice. They may move to a collaborative station. And the most importantly, they move to a small group with the teacher. And instead of the teacher teaching everybody the same thing at the same time and sitting down like, I know I did with the workbook pages in front of me and I either couldn't do them or did them too quickly and that kind of thing and just then was like, okay, extra credit. This is now a much more differentiated approach. So it gives the opportunity for enrichment. It gives the opportunity for reteaching. It gives the opportunity for extra practice. And then also gives the opportunity to do things like we just saw with the Lego group where students can work collaboratively on a project in math. And so that's something we're looking at, helping teachers use data where the kids are. And there's children that have mastered something. There's no need for them to do all fifty problems or both pages. Um, and so that's what we're really helping them, providing a lot of support with teachers. Uh, and we're using the pre-assessment data, which just means the information we get before we teach something, um, which is relatively newer concept, um, in math. Because we know that there are some students that know the information. So again, we don't need them to be sitting through and doing it again if they've showed mastery. So they may move on to their independent station or their project for just that day. Um, and so there's lots of different ways that we're looking at student ability. We're providing ongoing try, training for Inspire Science, K six. As you can see, our science scores, um, and where our children are in science knowledge, we need to make sure that they know more. Um, and so we need to provide the, the, um, experiences for them as well as the program. Know that many of the tests, uh, that the state is giving, that is not content. There is content to it, but it's not memorization like when we were, um, when I was in school. It is much more problem-based. So a problem on the test may be, you know, they have to read something and then they have to determine how the climate may affect the growth of that flower or seed as opposed to labeling the different parts of a flower. So it's a very different way of thinking and that's what we have to, um, help our children learn how to think that way. And that's what we are committed to do, certainly with science, um, but also in math and English Language Arts. And then la- one of the other things we're doing is professional learning communities. Sometimes you may see the abbreviation of P L Cs. Um, and what those are, are their collaboration sessions for teachers. We are scheduling time for teachers to come together to talk about students and the data and how they can support those students. Um, obviously, when you are a teacher and you're standing in your room with your children in front of you, you close your door, you have your door open, but there's not a lot of collaboration in your day as you're teaching. So we know that teachers need that collaboration to help each other. Um, they may share students or what, how did you work with this child and how was that child successful? I'm going to try that with mine. We also, um, have established Flex for those of you in the middle and high school, um, or who have children in the middle of high school. And what this is, are, these are small groups. Um, and Ms. McKnight and Mr. Miller and Mr. Suso have been working very hard with a program called Efficiency, which helps schedule students. Um, so if you have a seventh through twelfth grader and they haven't told you about Flex, now is a great opportunity for you to ask how are, how is Flex helping you or which teacher have you gone to in Flex? Uh, more information can come out about that and I'd be happy to talk to anybody further about Flex. Grade level expectations for target, standards-based student achievement, that's a lot of, um, jargon to just say we are holding children, children and teachers and students accountable for grade level expectations. And that does not mean we're making kids, um, struggle. But we're also allowing them the safe spaces to have that productive struggle. Um, we know that children, as well as anybody, needs to, you need to sort of grapple with something. You need to sort of grapple with something to learn it. And so we want to be able to, and those standards that I've talked about are challenging. And it's again, a different way of thinking. And sometimes it's not just the right answer that children, you know, well, what's the answer or how long does it have to be or is it graded? It is actually being given a problem or a concept and they have to solve it. But as we've seen a lot of our math programs, our science programs and our E L A programs. That is what the publishers are publishing and that is good instruction. So I never want to say we're teaching to a test, but I will say this development of creative thinking. And having children problem solve is a way that is going to make them much more successful. As they move through higher education and certainly in their jobs. And then standards with support, as I talked about on the continuum, identifying interventions and aligned materials. For that explicit and systematic instruction. And I think that is it.
Okay.
Questions?
Well, I'll ask if there is any question from the board.
Think that obviously we've had some of these numbers before and we continue to be concerned about them. I always appreciate when you give more information about the targeted approach and how we're using the data and how some of our. Changes like on course will help us do that even more efficiently or effectively. I also appreciate when you talked about the change in the science standard. And how, like you mentioned, not labeling the flower anymore, but like figuring out problems related to that plant. And it is a shift in terms of critical thinking. And so when we see those. Science numbers, we get alarmed, but then I noticed that on the, when they were compared to the New Jersey standards. We were still higher than the New Jersey standards because everyone's struggling with this shit. So, but it makes sense that if you can Google what a pistol is, right? Same and yeah, like then you don't need to know that as much as you need to understand how to raise that.
Very similar, like our children will not memorize states and capitals. Because that's all, you know, anything you, I mean, they're going to have phones and they have computers. So it is looking at changes and problems and things that. You know, as early as kindergarten, I've seen it be done. And if you give children the space to have conversations and talk and collaborate, they really can help each other. I'm not saying that the teacher's not a part of it, but we are working on teachers talking less and stepping aside. Because the children's expect, you know, when we, when we sort of let go of our expectations and what a third grader can do or can't do. We really are quite amazed and it does equal the playing field for everyone. Cause all of those subgroups that we talked about. And race, gender, anyone can have access to solving a problem on how to code the robot to move across the mat. And there's not, there's obviously background knowledge and content that needs to be attained, but. You can have children of all kinds of mixed abilities. I'm not saying that's for everything, but it does. That's what we, we live and work with in the real world. So that's the kind of experiences we want our kids. And they flourish and they were all on task and that's really just a wonderful thing to see and that's what we can see in our classrooms.
Yeah, I was wanting to know that. I'm sorry. Then a lot of the interventions that you mentioned are things that we've just recently put into place. And then the reveal math is something that we're just on the second year of, but we're already seeing some changes. And in the right direction. So we get frustrated that it doesn't happen immediately. But I, I like that there's a lot of different interventions that we're, that we're utilizing to push these numbers in different.
Um, I guess I was just curious with, with the scores, I, I, it seems like. You're kind of focusing on the, not focusing, but highlighting some of the scores. Which were above the state average. But even the, even being above the state average, still had our students in a category where they're not meeting expectations. So I guess to me, my, I feel like the state average, I mean, while that's kind of showing. The general state of things in, in Jersey, right? To me, the goal would be above, you know, being proficient and, and meeting expectations or more. I just want to make sure that that's.
Agreed.
We want every child to be meeting expectations and it can happen. Yep.
Any other questions from the board? I'll actually just say one thing if we can go back to slide twenty three per second. This is the mobility comparison. Because you look at these and it does, I think there is a reflection of growth from over, over the year from grade to grade. From third to fourth, from fourth to fifth. The one outlier in this, and we talked about this in curriculum, which is why I'm bringing it up, because not everybody on. Here is on that committee, but is that grade seventh and eighth math? Which has a large red bar showing, indicating that, you know, there is not that same level of growth. But there is an explanation for that and that is because if you're a very good math student in seventh grade. You're not going to be in that eighth grade cohort. You're going to be in the algebra one cohort, which is the one I saw. So that, so you're not, in other words, that bar does not measure, it's not an apples to apples comparison with the other bars. I just think that's worth pointing out so that people understand the data that they're looking at. And then, and I don't know if it's London, if you have anything you want to add on to.
No, he explained it much better than I did. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, we're going to do, I know there may be questions from the public. We are going to go to the superintendent's report and then I will open it up for questions. On Ms. Lennon's report, on the superintendent's report and any topic that she wishes to ask questions on. And she will be here to help answer questions if possible. Can promise that all the questions will be answered tonight, but we may have to get back to you with answers. If we can't answer succinctly here tonight. So with that, we'll go to the superintendent. So just, I just want to remind everyone and I sent this out, you know, about a week or so ago. And I know the tidings sometimes isn't great. We just started the year, but this is the state of New Jersey. But this is really truly an opportunity to recognize our teaching staff. And our support professional, our educational professional, our counselors and all the other folks. Child study teams. So we'll continue to put a plug into this. But whether it's you or your child, we sent this out for our students as well. If you're interested in nominating any of your child's teachers, please do so. This is the nomination form. You can fill it out, submit it back to your child's building principal. We're asking that they be back by Friday, November seventeenth. And then each of our buildings, our principal will put together a panel to review all the nominations. And then eventually, based on the criteria that the state provides, make a selection and then we will honor those individuals. You know, probably February or March. So again, we're really trying to pump up nominations. I know folks are busy and everybody gets caught up. But if you could find some time or promote this in any way you see fit, this is a great thing for our staff. To be able to receive. So I just kind of wanted to put a plug in for that. It's on our website as well, under what's new. So you know, don't have this, you can look at that and share it with other folks. And then I just wanted to give some updates as I typically do on our constructions. So first, our South Hundred Regional Elementary School. So if you've been by lately, you've noticed that. A lot of work has gone on with the new addition out front. So what you'll see here is that you can really kind of get an idea of what it's going to look like based on the structure. They were actually doing all the foundational work and then over the last week or so, they've really been doing all the rough plumbing and everything that needs to go in. And then as you can see, you know, with these that are around, the rebar is that literally they're going to be pouring concrete. For the addition in the next couple of days, from what I heard today, it might be as early as tomorrow. To have a floor in the new addition. So it's all ready to go, which is pretty exciting. And then from there, we expect a steel delivery, probably sometime in the next couple of days or within the next week. And then you'll see the remainder of the new addition start to be constructed. And obviously there's work going on inside as well. I shared some more detailed photos that I posted to media earlier today. But we're making great progress. We're continuing to be on schedule and it's kind of really exciting to see. The new addition start to really, you know, get an idea of what it's going to look like. But I wanted to share that. And then for the five eight site. If you haven't seen it lately, it looks a little different. So obviously they've been doing a lot of site work. So you can see it's been, you know, for the most part cleared and they're really working on the grading and all the different things. So this just kind of gives you an angle of what that entire piece looks like now. Which is obviously a lot different than it looked like a month or so ago. And as they continue to work forward on that, eventually we'll get to the point where we'll start, you know, kind of laying out where the building is going to be. Starting on foundations, including the things on those ones. We continue to work with the D E P. That's a weekly, you know, kind of conversation. And there's a lot of different steps and nuances to that permitting process. If anyone's ever worked with the D E P, you probably know what I'm talking about. But we continue to get updates on a weekly basis and we are making progress. It's just a little bit slower than we would have liked. So, so exciting times. Like I said, I shared these out on social media. And if you do go to our website, I've been kind of putting up on there, click on the school construction projects. Every two weeks, kind of a timeline and they're labeled for photos. So you can kind of, the goal would be you'll see the evolution of both buildings over the next. You know, full June for the pre K four and then over the next, you know, year or so for the five eight. So just kind of wanted to provide an update. Hopefully everybody can check these out. That's it. Okay, with that, then we will, oh, by the way, I think we do, we have a link to your superintendent report. On the website, we include it on our agenda. Right here. So that if you go to the agenda after the meeting, you can, you can access the presentation. And it will be sent out tomorrow. Is that right? Yes, correct. So then we come to the period of public comment. As always, I just ask if you have a question, the address it to the board. Just, we invite you to come to the podium, state your name and municipality where you live. And we ask that you keep your question or comment to about three minutes. With that, the floor is yours. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring in for the board?
Jessica Harding in West Ham. This is more of just a comment. I have a. Child with ADHD combined diabetes dyslexic and he really, really struggles. This year, I, to be honest with you, last year I didn't see a whole lot of change in his education, but this year. I mean, last week he was able to start recalling red words, which is huge for him. He's never, he's never been able to do that before. So we, I, I did see in the strategic planning thing. The teachers are identifying interventions and aligning materials and I do see it's working. They're doing something different and it's really wonderful.
Great question on the Gen Faction, we must stand well, on the assess continuum. Do our dibbles and the star map, are those what we use for screening for dyslexia and any other learning disabilities or what? Where, where do we, where does screening for more specific learning disabilities fall in? And also, how do, how do students who are on the very, very cusp? And maybe waffle back and forth between meeting standards with support and kind of meeting expectations. How do they, what happens to them? Cause I, I have three students who are across the range. And I have one who falls in that category and that, that kind of concerns me. Also, I just, while I'm up here, just throw it out there if you want to answer this as well. We talked a bit about K to five math, not only this, the fifth. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about sixth grade math because I've noticed a big gap. Between fifth grade and sixth grade. And I know the teachers kind of mentioned that it's a bit different. And I, I, I am, I, I did get a little concerned and it might just be me being an overprotective parent. But I've had a couple of different conversations with teachers where. The indication was we have to keep moving and we're not going back and reteaching stuff. Which kind of concerned me a little bit, especially with my, my experience of a student who. Already started from a gap and then jumped into sixth grade. And you know, I just kind of want to see where do those kids fall in because I feel like they're probably at the heart of or could drive a lot of. Our test for direction. So kind of just talk a little bit about that.
So I'll, the, the first question you had about dibbles. Yes, I did see where you mentioned. Yes, dibbles is part of our dyslexia screener. So that is a state law that we have to screen all children for dyslexia and the dibbles, there's actually. I won't get into it too much, but there's several assessments and dibbles that we give. And based on those scores, we then, it's not a one and done. That's just a screener. Then we would continue on with different assessments to identify if there is a learning disability or if it's developmental or whatever that may be. So then, and then your next question about standards with support, the great thing about standards with support is it's very fluid. So when we give our battery or our assessment in the fall. And a student may need additional support, whatever it may be with reading. Or comprehension or fluency or whatever that piece may be, then we provide them the support. With the standards with support teacher and then once they have mastered that based on. Whether it's progress monitoring, which would be weekly, just little assessments on that specific skill. Then they would be exited from the program. The idea, and that's one of the big ideas for M T S S, as I said, the multi-tiered system of support. Is that you're looking at a six week. I guess tiered support system. So the idea in a perfect world would be that a student is assessed. We identify a need, they get the intervention and then they're exited. And then we just would continue to watch and support. There's no one and done. We want to make sure that students feel comfortable with everything. And if we do feel like that the student has been exposed to the content standard. But yet hasn't mastered it or can't do it with consistently and independently. Then we will continue to provide those supports. And the supports may be in class where the standards with support teacher comes in. And as I was talking about the different groups or the different stations. The standards with support teacher could be working right in the classroom, having a small group. While the homeroom teacher or the math teacher also is running a group. So the idea is that there's lots of fluidity and we're not tracking or identifying or labeling students in any way. The, the math teacher could be working with the children that may need the support as well. Or the high achievers or, and that, the way that I see it is there's just two teachers in the room providing support to the children. And then the last piece you asked about the, the difference between the K five reveal and then the six eight illustrative math. We're looking at all programs and we're looking, especially as we reconfigure. I know illustrative math has, is heavily focused on a lot of the problem based learning and a lot of the thinking. And the reveal is more, has a larger package of different interventions and components to it. So we're really looking at all programs and that's really what my job is this year. I'm, you know, looking and evaluating. That's not to say we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. But we really want to make sure that everything we're doing is purposeful. So we're not, I'm not standing up here next year. God forbid, and we see the same thing. So you know, things take time, certainly. But we are looking at everything to see, you know, is this really matching state standards? And are children really getting the best that they could possibly get? Did I answer all? Got, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public?
Hi, Michael Strauss from West Ham. First, Ms. Lennon, thank you for a very thorough presentation. And I have to say, I appreciate the forward lookingness of it. I know it is hardly a function of the fact that you're just joining the district. But it, it definitely does add to what we do in education. Gina, thank you also for your comment of. Are we looking for the students to just rise or actually get there? And Jim also pointing out the, the math difference. That was a big thing as I was looking at this data. I do have to say I'm really appreciative of, um, being able to see all of this data, um, being able to. Kind of be, we're a small community and we kind of know what's going on in each of these classes, but like you can actually see it in here. Um. And I just want to, I have one question. So page fourteen, um, mixed race children are not reported on that. I'm assuming that it's because sample size is not large enough. Um, and page twenty-one is actually the breakdown between L P S and West Hamwell. Um, especially in E L A, there's, there's a. Good difference. And I'm wondering, are we looking at, um, best practices between the two buildings and kind of building off of each other's strengths in that?
Absolutely. We certainly are. Thank you, Michael. We are looking and that's one of the things that I'm really looking forward to the reconfiguration. So that as I said, all fourth grade teachers can be together at the same time. They're all teaching next to each other. Um, they're all using the same common assessments. We are also looking, um, currently we have a pilot program going on right now in E L A. In some, um, at different grades at different schools. So we're looking. At, um, a program that does meet the needs of all of our language arts components in one place. So. It has, it also has the room for some of the great things like our work in Gillingham, which you referred to, um, as the red word study that all the students are getting. And so we know that that is working. And so that is a part, we want to make sure that any program that we adopt or move forward with. Allows us to maintain the integrity and the fidelity of the programs we currently have. Um, and so that is something we're looking at. And again, when you have one fourth grade teacher, um, who is just. Trying to do the best she can with the children in front of her. And she doesn't, she can't turn to a colleague right there and say, oh, well, you know, I really just didn't, I don't know why this worked this way or why didn't they understand that? And the other teacher says, oh, well, I tried this or I would have experienced somewhere else. So I just worked with the coaches. Um, then that's the thing we want to really, you know, we want to bring people together, just like we as a board and as a community come together to support each other. That's what we want our teaching staff to be able to do.
Hello, uh, my name is Andrea Little. I'm from West Hamwell Township. Um, I have two sons that have graduated from the school, so no longer, um, within the school, but I'm very. Interested in the education and standards of all the students. Uh, I come from past being on the board when we were different districts. Thank you. Um, very, very, uh, insightful. A lot more information this year, which we really appreciate. Um, I like the idea that, yes, there are some high points, but I do think we have to look at the statistics of what. Is really here. Um, when I look at the state average and for instance, science, we were. Below the state average when I add up proficiency in advance. I expect our districts to be proficient and advanced. We have small classrooms, good teachers, um. Funding to make this happen in two different buildings and someday in one building. Um, so proficiency in advance is really where we need to be and we are below on all of the different statistics here. When I look at the L P S West Danwell District, South Middle School, High School, twenty-four percent. Of our, and this is like a quick math, but we're above state standards, twenty-four percent. This is not normal for our district. We can talk about learning loss, et cetera, but I could go back 10 years and say we were by far above, we have the ability to do this. Um, we need to like step away and I'm appreciating these new ideas because the fresh thinking is going to be really super important for the district. And I commend Lamberville on grades three, four, five, six, I mean, three out of four of those, they actually. Were over the state average and they should be. So I just want to be really super clear as. Someone in the community, I expect our children to get the best learning experience. Um, we have the teachers here to do it. I am disappointed by the standards at West Hamwell that. One out of, well, two out of the eight, so twenty-five percent actually met the state standards. Um, that is 10 years ago. Everything was above the state standards. Um, state standards have always been tough. We've always never wanted to teach to a test. But the fact is, is that we have really declined, um. And whether it's English, math, science, and again, we've been doing math, talking about standards of, um. Not like memorizing, we've been doing the, the word-based problem solving for a very long time. This isn't new to our curriculum. Uh, so I just hope that, you know. Last year I stood here, you can go back and rewind. Um, I heard a comment that said that. Oh, well, we always wanted to bring Lambert, we always wanted to get the two schools to be the same. But the idea was West Hamwell went down and we should all be rising up. And that's really the purpose of being one district, um, that I hope to see. And then one last thing is that. With the students moving to a middle school, will that then have a new, and that maybe next time you come up and you could talk about. Will there be, um, a math program for the upper level versus, you know, stopping, um. It looks like it flows from elementary to middle school currently how you have it, like your science through sixth grade. So I'm presuming that the middle school will have a math. Struck like a math, a science curriculum based for them. So, um. That's going to be around the corner and I hope that's part of your curriculum studies. So, thank you.
There any other questions from the public?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Harris from Stockton Borough. Um. I have a child in, uh, Lambertville Elementary. And I'm not here to complain or. If you're anything, I'm just here to introduce myself. I'm also the chair of the education board for Hundreden Counties and double A C P. And, um, we've already met, uh, with Tony. And, uh, we are literally meeting with every district and every community. And I've been to more. School board meetings and I care to count yours as a good one. Nobody got hurt here. Um, so, um, but we're just reaching out to just let you all know, first and foremost, Hundreden County has an M double A C P. And two, that we're here to offer our support to the school district, especially this committee that I lead. Um, anything that you have to deal with, with any disenfranchised students or parents or any students at all that have any. Thing that would be within our purview, we're happy to help. So please don't hesitate to reach out for us. Thank you.
Uh, any other comments from the public? Uh, seeing none, I know, uh, comments online. I'll close this period of public comment, but keep in mind there will be another period. For the, before the end of the meeting, it would be another opportunity if someone has something else that you think. Uh, with that, let's go to our committee reports in our business. Uh, we'll start with the grounds.
Uh, so we last met last Thursday, the nineteenth, um, for building's government finance. Um, we have a lot of stuff to approve on the agenda. We almost went through the whole outfit here. Um, but a couple of things to note, um, of course, Tony provided the instruction update, update that he provided in the superintendent report. Tony and Andrew got to present to superintendents and business administrators on our preschool expansion program because we were one of the first. Um, to take advantage of that funding and now seems like there's a big. Demand for it. So, um, a lot of people are interested in hearing what we've done, um, and how we run the program. So kudos to them. We have a couple of contracts up for approval, um, some larger ones to note, um, as you can see a lot of, uh. Items from map restaurant. Um, there's a lot of kitchen supplies and kitchen equipment, um, that'll be used for the elementary school and the middle school. Um, also we're public consulting group. That's our payment for the gifted and talented program review. Um, we're accepting a grant from L A E F for challenge day. Um, so they're paying the majority of that. So we thank the L A F for that. We are also accepting a grant for high impact tutoring and Gina won't apply for that. So thank you for that. Um, that's going to be forty-eight thousand dollars for after school tutoring. Um, instruction payments for the middle school and the high school are also up for approval. And, um, our arm investing update, which of course we invested the referendum funds were up to, um, one point two million dollars in interest. Other than that, I would like to move items A through T.
So move, gonna have a second please.
Second.
Uh, second by Megan, thank you. Any discussion on A through T?
I just have a question with the tutoring grant. Is that the state? With the state program that, okay, because I saw a news article a couple of weeks ago that was.
Behind that. We applied for, we haven't been officially awarded it yet. If we are, we're hoping the amount will be forty-eight thousand dollars. Haven't officially found out from state. Whether we're going to receive it or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? If not, the little.
In the shade? Yes. And please? Yes. And a percent? Yes. Like a woman? Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Uh, Miss Warren, uh, personnel.
All right. If I seem depressed tonight, it's just because the Phillies lost at home. So very shallow bullpen. But it's fine. Gave me a chance to wear the fanatic lanyard. So, you know.
What was, what was the score?
Five to one. Nola man, anyway, so. Where we don't have a shallow bullpen. Our staff here. So, um, our personnel actions, um, we have a few, uh, mid-year retirements. Um, you'll see listed below, um, a lot of staff that's been with us for a long time. We're looking forward to celebrating them in our June meeting, right?
Yeah.
Um, we have a few, uh, leave replacements as well as, um, uh, pointing, um, a few more, um, substitute teachers. And, uh, do we have a bus driver or just a substitute secretary? Yeah. So we have a few appointments, always good to get, uh, to invest in that roster, something that Rob Thompson doesn't do with the Phillies. Um, and, uh, in terms of our extracurricular appointments, you'll also see, um, the appointments for our, our winter coaching staff. Um, and with that, I'd like to move items A and B.
So move, gonna have a second.
Second.
Right. Any discussion on, on, uh, the personnel?
I would just also like to highlight, um, our governor educator, educator of the year award. Um, I know we discussed that in our committee. I really believe in our teaching staff here at South and, and our entire district. They're really phenomenal educators. Um, a lot of the educators that I saw my time of. Have since retired, but, um, I think, you know, there are tons of teachers here who I know personally changed my life. Who I think we can all agree have really strongly impacted the lives of our kids here in this district. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Um, you know, to nominate our teachers for this award, even if, um, you know, they, uh, aren't selected, we still pass along the kind words. To them and, and it really is a buoy for them. Um, so I really, um, strongly suggest. You know, go home tonight, this week and, uh, you know, please consider nominating a staff member. Uh, they really do deserve it. And that's all I have to add.
And you have a discussion on the personnel. I would just note Julie, the ass one has been here for like thirty-five or thirty-six years. She is a, she's in our child study team. Uh, when my wife was a student here, she was in her second or third year here and was her, you know, helped her with her education. Um, we were going to miss that. I don't know how they're going to do Camp Fairview without that sergeant, sergeant, right? And it's for bones. So it's three. Really fantastic dedicated people and we will listen from this. Um, with that, uh, if there are no other comments, let's go.
Brian Hughes? Yes. And some? Yes.
Yes.
In the shade?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, let's see, um, let's break this next. I'll do that. Uh, actually, okay. Sure. So just a couple of things, obviously we spent the majority of our time taking a look at our achievement report. But as Diana admits, I just want to echo, you know, we promised our next cycle program review, we've taken a look at the gifted and talented program. So, uh, we are going to be partnering with P C G. We did our special audit, um, who has a guru in the area of gifted and talented. So more information to be shared. We'll be doing focus groups with parents, students, board members, teaching staff, um, you know, a full audit. With recommendations, uh, and we will bring, you know, that group probably to our, you know, May board meeting with recommendations for next year. So. Just something to keep an eye on. Uh, two other things I just want to mention as well, um, challenge day. So you've heard that thrown around. Hopefully you've heard about it or are aware of it, especially if you have a eighth or ninth grade child this year. Um, it is a social emotional program, a full day interactive workshop that we're bringing to our students. I did a presentation on it, uh, last Tuesday evening. It was recorded. I did send it out for eighth and ninth grade parents. It is also on our website. So if you haven't had a chance, take a look at that. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, we talked about in committee is, um. For our seventh and eighth grade students on Wednesday, November eighth, we partnered with R V C C, Brett Valley Community College, and we will be doing a Holocaust survivor. Uh, which I think is excellent timing. Um, and, uh, they will be doing a presentation for our seventh and eighth graders. Our teachers in social studies will be doing some, uh, pre-information with our students. As a foundational piece before the webinar and then after the webinar, um, to follow back activities. So I just kind of wanted to make note of that as well. Very good. Uh, the public can move there. So, um, in policy, however, we do have, um. Uh, two items to move. We have the first reading of the, um. Attendance policy and a second reading that we've discussed at several meetings of the substance of youth policy. So. Um, I will, I just, I understand that. You're ready to move forward on that. So I will ask if someone could make a motion on either A and B for policy.
So move.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, I can be seconded by Rod. Thank you very much. Uh, any discussion on those policies? Uh, let's move.
Yes. Everyone?
Yes.
Kevin Chitty?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And, uh, school community.
So in school community, we first talked about the communication plan and how it's, um, going with the implementation. News bike seemed to be going very well and it looks like the content is coming from a broader range of sources than in previous years. So, um. That's definitely, uh, coming across. I know that there were teacher profiles done at the elementary school and those seem to be, um, popular. Uh, and that will be also, um, coming to the middle school and the high school. And, um, we're continuing to talk about through the strategic plan and the communication poll, um, all the options for disseminating information to both district families and the general public. And one, one opportunity may be the district parent council. Um, we also discussed, uh, a partnership, expanding our partnership with Go Hundreden. Um, Go Hundreden came and did an evaluation of the St. John's School for Safer School. Recognizing that there had been some concern expressed about whether or not kids were safe. And so we talked about that it looked like they, they found that it was, that it was, uh. Um, the, the flow that we had created was, was effective, but there were some things that they could do. Um, including we discussed how there's some awkward access points to the school and maybe we could modify that to make it, make them, uh, more open to pedestrian traffic. Um, and we also talked about that there's some real potential for combined effort with the district and the city. And Go Hundreden to improve safety for all pedestrians in the city. Um. And we talked about path to college. So Fisherman's Market is leading, uh, an event and we're working with them. Um, the event is called Path to College. It will be held in Spanish and it will, um, located at the St. John's School.
Um, change in location.
Oh, okay.
It'll be at the Lambertville Public Library.
Okay.
I love you.
And can you, I didn't write down the date.
This Thursday night.
This Thursday. Okay. Um, and that's where there'll be information shared about the college application process and financial aid and some regional colleges will be in attendance as well. Um, then we talked about fun stuff like the new school mascots and, and colors. Uh, we'll be, you know, basically collecting lists in a similar fashion that we did to the names of the schools, but it'll be, um, really student-led. And the students will, um, and eventually vote on, on the new mascot and the new colors for the elementary school and the middle schools. Um, we talked about potential tie-in events so where the kids could learn about, um, native species in the area. Um, but mascots aren't just animals. So really it's, it's, there's going to be quite a few options that the kids will be able to. Tap into or, you know, come up with. Um, and we, and, and once that list of suggestions is compiled, the students will vote and that would include the high school students. And we were saying that there would also be potential for, um, a student to design the art for the mascot. So, uh, we look forward to that. Sounds like a lot of fun. Um, and we talked about the therapy pro, dog program and how it's. Um, and we talked about the therapy dog program and how it's up and running at each school. And the kids have been really enthusiastic about it and how they've developed trading cards or for, for the dogs. The kids are, are extra excited. Um, um, add competition to anything. Dogs and competition sounds good. So. And that is it. Nothing to me.
Yeah, very good. Thank you very much. Um, a couple of routine things. We have no uh harassment, intimidation and bullying incidents to report. None of these that meet the state uh level for recording. Uh, we did have fire drills um at all of the schools uh twice during the month of September. Um, and so with that, uh, we come to the second period of public comment. Uh, again, I'd ask a direction, how much for the board? Um, try to keep it within three minutes and um, if you have something, please, let's hear which one.
One more question. I don't know if you'll be able to answer it yet, but um, the tutor, I know you said the grant is not money in hand yet. Um, but do you have an idea of what the program would look like? Cause I, I know that it was initially targeted to third and fourth grade, but it did allow flexibility for, and I was just wondering if. Like what would be the process in determining what that um tutoring uh would look like? And I, I totally forgot when I was up here before, but I, I just thought Stella did a really good job. Um, and it was, you know, fan, fan mom. And it was really great to hear um a little acknowledgement for the marching band as well. Thanks.
So um. More than likely, it would be in-house support. So I will tell you that since the state of New Jersey um announced this possibility, the grant. I've probably gotten more emails from vendors than you can imagine, trying to get the business outside vendors who claim to be, you know, interventionists. But more than likely, we, since our staff knows our kids the, the best, we'll be utilizing our staff. Uh, for that targeted program. And again, I think it's really important, especially with Jane Ellen mentioned before. Where we have students who are literally like when you dissect some of our scores. You know, there's a certain skill where if they got one or two questions right, it pumps into the next level. So we've really started to dig into that and identify that for students. And that will definitely be an area of targeted intervention. So some of those students who are right on the cuff. If any of the reins are to continue, we want to bump them up to the next level. So again, from what we're told, um, we kind of thought everyone was going to get it. But we were told recently, I think, that I don't know if there's enough money for every district to get it. So they are going to use some type of criteria to decide who gets it, who doesn't. We're not exactly sure what that is. Uh, but we had a proof tonight on the agenda, just so if we did do receive it, we can actually accept it. Well, I'm not sure timeline when we'll find out.
Uh, any, uh, any other questions? Do we have any online questions?
We do not.
Uh, if we have no other questions from the public, then I will close the second period of public comment. Um, we do have a need to go into an executive session this evening, um, to discuss uh. Personnel matter. Um, that will probably take twenty-five to thirty minutes. Um, we do not anticipate taking any action after we come out of the um session. We will leave the room. You're welcome to stay if you'd like or, or leave. Um, so with that, I will ask for a motion to go into the executive session. Thank you, Megan. And second by Diana, thank you very much. Uh, all in favor?